Fashion sense going on in here.
Good evening, I'd like to call the annual meeting to order. Thank you all for attending this evening. The first thing we do at the annual meeting is we elect a chairperson to conduct the budget hearing and the meeting this evening.
I'd like to name Jack Henry.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jack, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. The official notice?
Uh, the following notice appeared in the Wannakee Tribune on both October 10th and October 17th. Notice is hereby given to the qualified electors of the Wannakee Community School District that the budget hearing will be held at the District Administrative and Maintenance Center at 905 Bethel Circle on the 21st day of October 2019 at 7:00 PM. The summary of the budget is available by contacting the District Office or through the District website.
Budget summary and district goals report, District Administrator and Business Manager, are you ready for presentation?
Yes. Do you want to cover this slide Randy or you want me to do this one?
You can go.
Okay. What I have first for everyone is just a high-level overview of the goals that we had in our budget process this year. But just to take a quick step back from this slide, so typically we have three drafts of our budget that is presented to the school board on an annual basis. And the third draft that we typically approve in June is then brought forward to the community for consideration of the tax levy in October. This year was a little different. The state budget was signed in July, so the Budget Committee of the School Board requested a fourth draft of the budget, which we moved forward to the School Board in August. So the information that you see presented this evening is based on the information we had available in August. A little bit later on tonight, we'll talk about some updated information that we've learned in the last couple of weeks. Julie mentioned the posting, so two weeks ago, we were required to get the budget publication in the Wannakee Tribune. That's a state requirement. But since then, additional information has been provided to the school district that will require the School Board to meet next week and revise the budget and the tax levy. What you see on the screen are the goals that we identified in the process, all the way back in January and February of this past fiscal year. This information was shared in a variety of settings, in staff meetings as well, to just share with both the public and the staff of the district what our goals were as we were moving into the 1920 budget process. Randy's going to talk a little bit about the next couple of slides, and we'll jump into some larger information.
Alright. Thank you Steve. But I want to, the next couple of slides really just outline some of our priorities per our strategic plan. What I want to talk about though, is just really the high level of how those all connect together. To start off with, our whole, our mission as a school district is to move children forward and student achievement. And to that, I credit our staff for doing continually a great job with working with our students on a daily basis, and again, our school district achieving at a very high level. So I'm very proud of the work our staff's done, the work our students have brought forward, and thank our community for their support of our district. With that being said though, there are areas that we are focusing on as we move forward and grow as a district. The first place I want to highlight is just our work that is working to meet our students' needs on social, emotional learning and equity, and wanting to really have conversations, professional development, and looking at our practices as far as how we meet the needs of all kids. So that is certainly one of our focuses as we're moving forward. By doing a good job in that area, it helps us to have a greater impact on all of our academic areas that we also have a focus on as well. Looking again at our staff, putting together a robust professional development program so that we can all continue to grow professionally, particularly in some of the strategic areas that you can see through the last, the next two slides. Part of our HR needs, and Mr. Grabarski's been leading that with Mr. Summers, is looking at how we can improve our recruitment and retention of our staff. We are in a very competitive market at this point, with obviously low unemployment in the state and in this region, and also experiencing shortages in many areas with regards to teaching positions. So being competitive and being creative in our recruitment, and also promoting our district to future staff members is really important, so I commend them for the work that they're putting forth, and trying to really support our staff and also bring staff to our district. Part of our community, as you're all aware, is we are growing. And as you drive around the community, you see additional home subdivisions that continue to pop up. And as we are looking at that, that is certainly putting us in the forefront of our facilities planning. We are going to be entering, or we are entering really the Phase Two of our facilities planning. Right now, we don't have a specific identification that the Board has reviewed with regards to what are, what those specific facility projects that will be moving forward in the next year will be identified as, but it's certainly looking at the second phase of our growth projections, and also realizing that with our growth, that we need to be on the forefront of meeting the needs from the facilities, the programmatic, and then just scaling our work so that we can meet the needs of all of our kids across the district. And the last piece I just want to highlight is something that we are targeting across the district, from the School Board to our staff to administration, is how we connect and engage with our parents and our community. One of the things that we are having some concerted work on is how do we take the input that we receive from parents, and how are we applying that to improving our practice? And then also, you can look forward to as particularly as we move some of our facility work forward and our growth pieces forward, that we'll be reaching out to our community members and parents to really get your input as far as how we can put forth a program and a plan that's going to meet the needs of our students and our community moving forward. So that's really a high level of where we're at as a school district. Again, very proud of the work that our staff has put forth, and very appreciative of our parents and our community for how you support our district. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Discussion and review of the budget?
Thank you, Jack. So I'm going to provide a high-level overview of the state budget process. So the 2019-21 state budget process had some changes for schools across Wisconsin. More resources were provided to schools in the most recently passed state budget than it had been in recent years. As an example, the revenue cap formula was increased by $175 a student, which was very positive for public schools in Wisconsin. In addition, a state categorical aid was provided in the amount of $88 per student. You can add them together and compare it to around the $200 per student that we have been receiving in recent years. As a result, our budget planning process identified $1.8 million worth of new resources for the district, combined between the revenue cap and funds that are not related to the revenue cap. Where does this compare to our recent history? As you can see, the revenue cap increase identified for 1920 is higher than we have been in the recent past, and that was really due to the fact that the budget that was signed by the Governor included a significant increase to the revenue limit formula for all districts in Wisconsin. One of the other primary sources of aid for schools is the state general equalization aid. There was an $82, $83 million increase in 1920. An even more significant increase is coming next fiscal year. And at the time we put the budget materials together, we estimated the increase of $500,000 in aid. And as a reminder, under the state's revenue cap formula, increases or decreases in equalized aid is offset by the property tax levy. Special education aid, so this was an area of major focus for Governor Evers. The budget proposal included a significant increase in state categorical aid for special education. Throughout the budget process, the amount that was proposed by the Governor has scaled back yet. It was a significant increase from what we've seen in the recent past. So state special education aid was increased by $15 million in 1920 and $81 million in the second year of the biennium. We're estimated to receive an increase of $226,000 in the 2019-20 school year. Increases in special education aid, in the end, change the amount of general fund or regular education fund dollars that are transferred to the special education fund to offset the deficit in that fund. So what that means is increases in either Fund 10 or 27 are very positive to the overall school financial funding formula, and are available to be used by students for educational purposes. So it's always a very positive increase for us to see with state equalization aid. Local property taxes, the state budget kept the school levy credits the same. School levy credits are complicated in that school districts don't know what they are. So school districts are not informed of the levy credit amount. Tax levies are certified by local school boards without knowing what the school levy tax credits are. Generally speaking, property wealthy, high-spending districts receive more funding through tax credits than general school aid. Governor Evers did propose shifting funds from the school levy tax credit to the equalization aid formula, however, that part was not moved through the legislature. Enrollment increase, earlier on in the process, we were estimating an enrollment increase of 58 students. In the end, we had a total enrollment, our Third Friday count is the state required count, and the Third Friday in September was 4,376 students. So the overall increase as identified here was 36 students compared to an increase of 58. And the major difference was the enrollment in the 4K program. We had been estimating 274 students in the 4K program. In the end, our enrollment was 240 students, which is very low for us with our history of 4K. So obviously, we'll take a look at that to see next year's kindergarten count, were more students not participating this year, or truly is the enrollment of that particular age lower than in recent years. Enrollment trend, Randy talked earlier about our continuing increasing enrollment for the school district and the need to take a look at our facilities. Our last referendum was in November of 2014, so you can see the last referendum, we were at 4,039 students, today we're at 4,376 students. So our enrollment in the district continues to increase, and as we move forward, we're going to expect to see very similar patterns. One of the things that we always track is the capacity of our schools versus the enrollment. The capacity is really calculated by work we did back prior to the 2014 referendum. So the purple relates to the student count, the gray relates to the capacity that was calculated for the school. And one thing to note is we continue to track the maximum capacity across all school buildings compared to our enrollment. Every year, this keeps declining, which is the maximum excess capacity, which is currently 303 students. So every year, their enrollment goes up. So if next fall, we have 50 more, this will go down to 250. So as we continue to increase our enrollment, the ability of our facilities to hold all of those students declines over time. Overall, it's a 3.5% increase compared to the year prior. We did have an 18, 2.2% increase in staff in the 1920 fiscal year. The School Board will approve 1920 salaries and wages later this fall. We do have a goal at the November School Board meeting, and we do include a $100,000 contingency amount in our budget, which is identified for emergencies or other things that come up during the year. This is a history of our general fund, actual expenditures going back to 2012-13. Cost per student, so the cost per student is calculated based on our general fund time divided by our actual enrollment. You see very consistent numbers with a slow increase over time as a result of a combination of additional funding provided through the state funding system, combined with our enrollment increases that we've seen over the last few years. For our revenue, there's two main sources of revenue. State aid is one of them, and the local property tax is the other. In addition to those two sources, we have revenues coming in from things like student fees, interest, grants, et cetera. One of the things that's always interesting to track over time is the percentage of where our resources are coming from as a school district. As an example, you can see the percentage of the property tax levy over time, how much of our funding is coming from the property tax levy versus how much is coming from the state. Per pupil aid is still relatively new in the Wisconsin school funding formula. Going back to 1213, it was 0.5%. Today, it's 6.1% of all revenues that we receive as a school district. The tax levy for the 2019-20 school year is proposed at $31,541,225. I'll talk in a little bit about how the School Board is meeting next week to look at revisions to that number. The tax levy is comprised of our general fund, our main educational fund, our community fund, Fund 80, and our debt service levy, Fund 39. The School Board is allowed by law to change the tax levy as necessary prior to November 1st. We do have a special School Board meeting scheduled for next Monday night at this location, where we will be asking the School Board to change the tax levy as required. The debt service tax levy is $7,392,000. This Wednesday, the School Board's Budget Committee is meeting, and one of the topics of consideration is the debt service levy and options for a 1920 school year. Equalized value is referred to the property value that the state of Wisconsin identifies for all of the municipalities in our district. It's important to note that equalized value is different than the assessed value figures that are kept at the records of each of our local municipalities. Equalized value is a figure determined by the state, shared with the school district, that we're required to use to allocate our tax levy across all of our municipalities. Tax rate, which is an estimated increase on $39 on a $360,000 home. This is based on the estimated equalized value. I'll talk in a minute about how the actual equalized value has been certified to the district just this month, so we know what it actually is. On October 1st, the equalized value from the state of Wisconsin was provided to school districts across Wisconsin. We had estimated an increase of 3%. The 3% is low compared to what actually happened. The real increase in equalized value from the state of Wisconsin is over 10% for our school district, which is a very high number for any one year to be increased in equalized value. That information came in October. As a result, when the Budget Committee's looking at our tax levy information on Wednesday, and when we will be bringing information to the School Board next Monday to look at the budget and the tax levy, the tax rates will be lower than what was projected. It's always important to keep in mind that the equalized value information that comes from the state of Wisconsin creates shifts in property taxes. There's a couple of different kinds of shifts that occur. One of them is between municipalities, and one of them is within. And we're going to have examples of both of this occurring in our school community this year. So what I mean by within municipalities is I've given some examples here of the percentage of the school district tax that has been sent to the town of Wesboro in the last couple of years. You can see as an example, a change from 24.3% in 2015-16 to 22.6% in 2018-19. That changes every single year, so the way our taxes are allocated is a continuously changing calculation. Within municipalities occurs as assessed values change. So several of our school municipalities went through that process recently. So for those property holders within our school district that had this happen, if your assessed value changed and it was higher than what the average was for your municipality, you're going to have a tax shift occurring within your municipality. You will have a larger share of the school tax if your home's property increase was higher than the average. Now, the opposite will occur if your home increase was lower than the average. So if the average hypothetically in the village of Wannakee was 30,000, and your house won a 10, you're going to see a shift away from your home onto others. So these two factors are not factors that the school district can calculate for individual property taxpayers. We can only show at a high level how the taxes are being distributed amongst the municipalities. And as Board members know, that's going to be a focus of our discussion next Monday, where I will show you what that actually looks like for each municipality in the school district. Fund balance is a measure of the assets minus the liabilities in the school district. This slide provides information on Fund 10 only. The School Board has had a three-year plan to pull down the fund balance at Fund 10 while increasing the fund balance in Fund 41, which is an account used for facility maintenance. It has been a planned effort that is being conducted over a three-year period of time. Okay, next steps with the budget. So the School Board has requirements that have to take place after this meeting tonight. So the September enrollment count was lower than what we were projecting. That means the revenue limit formula is lower than what we were projecting. Because of that, the property tax for Fund 10 will be lower than what we were calculating. When the revenue limit is lower, the amount of funds that can come in between state equalization aid and property taxes has to be adjusted. In addition, there are expenditure changes that take place since August of 2019. A great example of that is in Wisconsin, there's an open enrollment system. So the open enrollment students that have enrolled in our district, other districts will be paying those costs. And for Wannakee students who are opening up, we will be paying those costs, and we are not able to know what that is until the Third Friday in September enrollment count. The final district property values, which were available as of early October, and then the calculation of the final district revenue limit. The other things that we'll share to the School Board members next week is the state aid is certified to school districts on October 15th. So again, we did not have that information when the budget publication was placed into the Wannakee Tribune, which causes a change in the Fund 10 property tax amount. The tax rate as well is changed because of the equalized value information from October. The estimated tax on a $360,000 home changes as well. All of these changes must be completed by November 1st. And just for the members of the public to know, the Budget Committee is meeting this week Wednesday. It's an open meeting, anyone is welcome to attend. Followed by next Monday night, there's a meeting here at Bethel Circle to look at all of these changes that we're talking about.
Seth Proctor.
Thank you. It's Ann Huber. Please do not come to Bethel Circle. And our budget and financial information is reviewed by a lot of different entities. So our School Board, Mark Trezor, Eric Petzel, right here, reviews all of our invoices, receives a folder to look at those over a specific dollar amount. We have a School Board Budget Committee, which includes three members. All seven School Board members will review the budgets. All of our information is reported to the Department of Public Instruction. The School Board hires an external auditor, which comes in to review all of the information. Then we have external private businesses who occasionally, as we are issuing debt, will review our finances. And then at any time, citizens are welcome to request any information that we have at all. So we have quite a bit of information on our website, but for any citizen who's viewing this at a different time, you're welcome to reach out to me at any time, and we will provide whatever information you potentially would like. This is just a statement that was provided from the last external review of Moody's, which is a firm that looks at our district's finances whenever debt is issued. One of the things that we do like to do at the annual meeting is just share a couple of slides as far as how we compare to other schools in Dane County. The first slide that you see is related to tax rate. So our school district is firmly planted right about in the middle of Dane County communities for tax rates. You can see we're very, very similar to communities like Oregon, Wisconsin Heights, Madison, Deerfield, Stoughton, Marshall, Cambridge, Deerfield. There's quite a few of us in a really, really close range with each other of our tax rate. And the other information that we like to share is really our cost per student. This is an area where we definitely are different. We are down here at $13,000, a little over $13,000 compared to the county average. So we're the fourth lowest spending district on the districts on this chart. You may ask, well then, how are you in the middle, the pack for the tax rate if you're down near the bottom for spending? And a lot of that has to do with the state equalization aid formula, and where each district sits, what the property value is of each community, and things like what referendums have been passed, what are the age of the buildings. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. But generally speaking, our district is always tracked down in this range. We've been down in that range since the beginning of the revenue cap formula back in 1993, and we've always historically been in the bottom-third range for spending in the county. So at this point, Jack, I'll turn it back over to you to feel free to see if there's anyone who has any questions who might be here this evening.
Thank you Steve. Any questions regarding the budget?
I'd just like to testify as to the budget. Is that okay? So I have three brief points I'd like to make with regards to the proposed budget. And my first point is that I believe education investments are good investments. That I, as you know, serve on the county board, and budget time is when we find out where people's values really are. And I know on county board for about 10 months of the year where we're not doing the budget, everyone's supportive of everything, but when it comes to budget time, those basically two months of the year where we decide the budget on county board, that's where we find out where people really stand, because if you're willing to put money behind something that shows there's a real commitment, and I like to joke on county board, we're friends with each other about 10 months of the year, and then we fight a lot for two months of the year because that's where the money gets divvied up. And I strongly believe- And I strongly believe that investing money in education is always a good investment. I've always challenged anyone to say, "Show me the community where people say that's not a good community to live because the schools are too good and the community has invested too much in their schools." That community doesn't exist. In fact, it's the opposite, that people say, including for Wannakee, especially for Wannakee, "We want to live in this community because the schools are so good." And that investment benefits even people who don't have kids in the schools because property values are higher, the community is better because of the investments in the schools. And one thing I hear a lot on county board, particularly with regard to this jail renovation we're going to do, is people say, "Why do we have to spend money on renovating the jail? I'd rather you spend the money on schools." And I try to explain to people that because of the way that local governments are divided up, there's no real way for us on county board to directly say, "We're going to reduce the money for the jail. Instead, we're going to spend it on schools." I can tell you that there's nothing I wish I could do more on county board than to do exactly that and divert money from the jail and to put it into education instead. And one thing that I always think about on county board is I try to limit the spending we do on county board on things like the jail renovation, which we have to do, and it's its own long story, but because I want there to be room in the community for when the board potentially goes to referendum asking for that investment in education, that you're able to succeed in doing that because we're limiting the taxes, we're calling for things such as the jail to the minimum that we have to do. And because it's very important to me that we invest in schools and not jails, and I guess wish that local government is structured differently where we could do that more directly. So that's point one. Point two, I think it's important at budget time to ask ourselves as taxpayers, what are we getting in terms of the results for the investments that we're making? And I think it's good to look sometimes at some of the metrics. And one metric is the test boards. And I looked with great interest at an article that was published in the Wisconsin State Journal on September 12 about test boards in Dane County, and I'll quote from it, quote, "In the Wannakee School District, the sixth grade class scored the highest of all Dane County students in grades three to eight on math, with nearly 85% proficient or above." And I think that's something we can really take pride in because there's a lot of good school districts in Dane County. This is a highly educated county, and the fact that the sixth graders in Wannakee scored the highest, not just for sixth graders, but the highest percentage of anyone in the grades three through eight, I think is a real accomplishment that we should take pride in. And just by point of comparison, the Madison School District, less than 34% of sixth graders were proficient or above in math. And I think it's important to just reflect on what a huge discrepancy that is. Using my own math skills that I learned from third grade or so, 85% in Wannakee, 34% in Madison, that's a 50 percentage point disparity. In other words, kids here are doing really well compared with some of the peer institutions and peer districts that we're competing against. And that Wisconsin State Journal article goes on to say that the Wannakee School District's sixth graders also top the county in English Language Arts with 78% proficient or advanced in that subject. So I don't know what is going on with sixth grade in Wannakee, but keep doing it. And I would compare, in Madison, the Madison School District, less than 31% of sixth graders are proficient or advanced in English Language Arts. Again, a very large discrepancy, 78% in Wannakee, only 31% in Madison. I think it's worth giving yourself some credit for some really good outcomes that we're producing. As people who've heard me come testify at these meetings in previous years, I always do mention the National Merit semifinalists. Less than 1% of high school seniors are named as semifinalists. One unusual aspects of the National Merit competition is that the real cutoff is becoming a semifinalist. That's where the actual decision really gets made. Later, there's finalists and National Merit scholars, but the semifinalist is really what counts because of the way that program is set up. And there are three students who are National Merit semifinalists this year. I just wanted to recognize them, and they are Ashlyn Anderson, Sebastian Geraci, and Abigail Schmeiser. And the third and final point I want to make is that I just wanted to say thank you to the members of this board. I know that there are opportunities to express appreciation for teachers, teacher appreciation days and activities, and that's important, but nobody really gets around to thanking you on the board, or very few people do. And I know from serving on county government, very few people ever call me up or email me to say, "Hey, just so you know, I'm really happy with county government." People call me, they email me because they're upset about something. And as I frequently point out to anyone who asks about potentially serving the local government, I've always thought school boards the hardest because with county government, it affects some people a lot if you happen to be an inmate in the jail or if you're homeless, but for the majority of people in Dane County, they don't have that much direct contact with the county government on a day-to-day basis. But schools directly affect people's kids, and it's something that's very close to people's hearts, as it should be. And the decisions you make, people can get really, really upset about them. And by agreeing to be on county, our school board, you're kind of putting yourself in the line of fire, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for your service because you've all got other jobs and other things you can be doing instead of spending your evenings here, and I just wanted to express that appreciation. That's all I have for the budget. Obviously, I'm going to be voting in favor of it, and thanks for allowing my testimony.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone else that would like to address? Move on. The next is review the minutes of last year's meeting. Do we have to vote on this, approve them?
Yes.
Does everybody review?
You had clarification, Rebecca, that those do not need to be voted on.
They do not need to be approved.
All right, thank you.
I think we've got copies circulated around if people want to review last year's treasurer's report.
Part of the, Steve went through a couple of key points already. Our ending fund balance for 2018-29 school year was $6.7 million, which puts us at 13.3% of the general fund, Fund 10. It is down $682,000 from the previous year, and the board's well aware of it, and some of the public is, but four years ago, we, the board, made a decision to take some of Fund 10 each year and put it into Fund 41 for capital maintenance programs. And so as you go down, you'll see that at this point, we have $1.3 million into our Fund 41, and the combination of those actually comes up to 15%, which is our guideline for combination Fund 10 and Fund 41. The other note, you might see, end of the year balance is our food service. Fund 50 is down $133,000. Ideally, your food service budget is really covering what you're providing the kids, but we've also been using that fund to replace some of our appliances in the various schools, and so that's where the reflection of all this comes from, and it's something that we'll be looking at as we go into the next school year.
Is that it, Mark?
That's it.
Thank you, Mark.
Do we need to vote on this piece, though? Action should be taken.
Motion, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Did you say that, Dave?
So will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, there's a series of resolutions that will need to pass for different activities along the school board to, going to different activities. So what we'll need is a motion for each one of these. Resolution, authorize the school board to charge student fees.
I make a motion. I'm Tim Kiefer, and I move the resolution.
Who seconded?
Tim Shell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Resolution B, salaries and expenses for school board offices. President, clerk, and treasurer receives $3,200 per year for all regular and special meetings and committee meetings. All other board members receive $2,800 per year for all regular and special meetings and committee meetings. Reimbursement for expenses as well. Do I have a motion to? Is there a motion?
I move the resolution. Aaron May.
Is there a second?
Per illegally.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. School lunch program. The school board needs authorization to conduct a food service program. So be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wannakee Community School District, Dane County, State of Wisconsin, is hereby directed to furnish school lunches to any and all students of this district at such place and time and at such cost as shall be set by said school board. And the school board is hereby authorized to pay any deficiencies which may result from said lunch program. Do I have a motion to approve?
No, I move to reapply a school lunch program.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Dan Luntzer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Legal counsel. Periodically, it is necessary for school boards to seek legal advice and counsel. Your approval is necessary. Authorization for legal counsel be resolved that the Board of Education of Wannakee Community District be authorized to engage legal counsel to represent the district and provide legal service, legal advice to the district. Do I have a?
Per illegally, it's motion of resolution E as presented.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Annual meeting date. Resolution E, 2020 annual meeting date. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wannakee Community School District be authorized to set the date and hour for the 2020 annual meeting within the guidelines established by Wisconsin statutes, or be it resolved that the 2020 Wannakee School District annual meeting shall be held at some date in 2020. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion in regards to resolution to allow the school board to establish the date for the guidelines.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution E passes. Transportation. Board needs your approval to conduct contract for bus services and/or operate its own buses. Be resolved that the Board of Education of Wannakee Community School District, Dane County, State of Wisconsin, be authorized to purchase, operate, and maintain transportation vehicles as well as contract for transportation services to provide transportation to students, including but not limited to students whose residence is located within two miles of the school, attend, student attends as per board policy. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion?
Tim Kiefer, I'll move resolution F.
Second. Motion to approve?
I'd like to raise a question. Why are we saying, "Including students whose residence is located within two miles of the school"? Should it be in excess of two miles?
So, great question. So what Dave's referring to is this point right in here. So our resolution is unique compared to what a lot of districts take a look at when they're looking at something like this that they're having meeting. The reason for that is our school board policy on transportation is more generous than what Wisconsin state law says. So Wisconsin state law says two miles or greater. In our district, K through four students, as an example, have a different marker. Instead of two miles, it's one mile. Students in grades five through 12 have 1.75 miles instead of two miles. So when this resolution was originally prepared by our legal counsel years ago, this phrase was specifically added to make sure that the public was aware of the fact that in our community, we provide more busing than what the state law says, which is really the two miles. And so it was written this way by our legal counsel to make sure that it's understood that we bus more students than required to.
But I guess when I look at the language, though, maybe it's just me. We're not referring to state statute at all anywhere to say the two mile or above. And if you just said transportation to students as per board policy, we'd be free to do anything we wanted. I'm not sure, but I guess I'm pointing grammarian here, and I should stop now, but it just doesn't seem like that adds anything because it doesn't say anything. It's basically saying we're able to do whatever we want, and not stating it would basically be saying we're free to do whatever we want.
I think it's putting all the power in as per board policy as you point out, but it's also pointing out that it's different than state law by articulating that it's less than two miles. So it's kind of accomplishing two pieces, where somebody who may attend, knowing that the rule is two miles or greater, ours is different. So it's articulating that and then also giving all the power to our policy. That's, I think, why they've written it that way.
I appreciate Dave's point in raising the question, but I do think there's value in having the question raised. So we've enlightened the public. I have no problem with the way it's worded.
I guess I, when I'm looking at it, I'm saying, okay, included, we could kind of skip the but not limited to. But including residents located within two miles, that to me, that when I first read it, it struck me, that means everybody within two miles gets transportation. We're not limited to people within two miles, but we're including students, and we're not saying only some of them, we're saying students within two miles.
Board policy.
Right.
Because, you know, we're not giving transportation to everybody in two miles in the board policy.
Right, but up there, it looks like we're including students.
We are including.
The wording could be clarified. I'll give you that.
It looks like it says all students within two miles. And I got jumped on this enough about that while collecting signatures to be on the school board, about people wanting that. And when I read that sentence, my first thing, if I was reading that with no idea of anything, I'd be saying, "Students within two miles are covered." It kind of looks like that.
What we can do is take this back because we still work with the same attorney who wrote this and ask for clarification for presenting this in the future. But the intent behind this was to make sure that there was an understanding that our local school board policy does allow transportation within the two-mile scope, which is not required by Wisconsin state law. We certainly do not want anybody to look at this and misunderstand what we're doing, so if we can be more clear, we'd be happy to do that. so if we can be more clear, we'd be happy to do that.
So we'll bring this, we'll approve it tonight, bring it back with clarifications next year. Do you have a question?
So just as a citizen at this meeting, I could say, first of all, I can tell this was written by a lawyer because only lawyers would write that confusing kind of way. Question, and you're sending it back to the lawyer.
I'm looking for the double negative.
But I think what's the important part of it is the end, the last four words, as per board policy. And I'm aware there's at least one other community in this county where they have to have, or at least in the past, they had to move their board meetings to the gymnasium because the question of school buses and how far out the school buses would go had become so controversial. And I, as just a taxpayer in the district, don't want to have to come to the annual meeting to hash that out. I would frankly prefer that you, as school board policy, make that determination because I know it can be, at least in some other communities, quite controversial. I prefer that we not have to decide it right now during this. I think it'd be great to rewrite it for next year, but as for now, to say as per board policy, I think it's good. So I will vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution, transportation passes. Tax levy. The board recommends a total tax levy of $31,541,225, of which, $23,205,745 is for the general fund, $7,392,184 is for debt service, zero for non-referendum debt service, $509,296 is for capital expansion fund, and $434,000 is for community service. Read it. Aye. I move that there be levy, be levied a school tax assessment against all taxable property within the Wannakee Community School District in the sum of $31,541,225 dollars necessary to operate and maintain the district school system and to finance the recommended budget for 2019, 2020 school year.
So are you making that motion, Jack?
I'm adding it up for a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So somebody out here has to make a correction. We need a motion to?
I will make the motion. Presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. So feel free to ask for any information or answers of any board members or administrators. Any further discussion? Thank you for coming this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Mike.
Mike is first. Do you have a second?
No, I was the second.
He was the second. Joan was the first.
Mike the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.